... and say the pledge of allegiance to the Atherton City Council and the Channel District. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. [laughter] City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Leest?
Here.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. So tonight, we have two proclamations that I am very honored to present, and I'll do the first one. It is a proclamation to the American Red Cross for the month of 2013. And today, we have with us a special guest. Could you come forward, please? Hi.
Hi.
This is Amy Lang. She's with the San Mateo County, San Francisco County.
San Mateo County Leadership.
Okay. Well, I will read briefly the proclamation for the American Red Cross Month. It said, "The American Red Cross has touched many lives in Atherton, as well as across the country and around the world. During American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood, and we invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. The American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 130 years. Throughout this past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. The American Red Cross also supported major international disasters, including the Japan earthquake and tsunami response, while continuing to its work on the 2010 Haiti earthquake response and recovery. In Atherton, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter works tirelessly through its nearly 1,000 volunteers to support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. The American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped over 1,405 people with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during the 392 local disasters last year alone." They've trained over 117,345 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety, and over 173,555 individuals received preparedness training, provided emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to over 1,810 local military families, and supported 31 Bay Area hospitals, providing them with nearly 150,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. For nearly 100 years, United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian missions. Our community depends upon the Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. This is especially important in these challenging economic times, which impact the Red Cross and many people in our community across the nation. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Atherton, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the Town of Atherton of California, do hereby proclaim March 2013 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans and Athertonians to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
[applause] Why don't you? Is that how she faces the audience?
Sure.
This time?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Lewis, and your fellow councilwoman for issuing this proclamation. My name is Amy Lang. I am the Chair of the San Mateo County Leadership Council, and it's for the Red Cross Bay Area Chapter. You went through half of my talking points, so thank you very much. What I wanted to let you know about is just a few upcoming events that you might be interested in. So this year's San Mateo County Heroes Breakfast is taking place on Thursday, May 30th, at Toppler Creek Grill in San Mateo. We actually will be recognizing everyday heroes at this event, so members of the community and our neighbors who have distinguished themselves in the categories of life-saving and community service, as well as acts of kindness and philanthropy. The nomination deadline for this year was actually this past Friday, March 15th, but if you know of anyone that you would like to nominate, it's a year-round process. So please feel free to go to our website and submit the nomination. We'll include them in next year's group. So I also would like to personally invite all of you to join us at the breakfast on May 30th. You can go to the website, redcross.org/smcheroes for more information and to purchase your tickets. You'll all be getting invitations in the mail, too, I'm sure. So we also have Save a Life Saturday coming up on June 1st in Redwood City. This is part of our Ready Neighborhoods campaign, so this is in partnership with P G A. That's going to be at the Sienna Youth Center, and that's where we'll be providing hands-on only CPR, hands-only CPR, and emergency preparedness at no cost. So folks can register on the website. And then I want to leave this with you. I just heard about this today at our board meeting. There's a Ready Neighborhoods Prep Rally taking place. It's April 18th, from 9:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the California Academy of Sciences. It's called Make Your Game Plan Prep Rally 2013, and Jerry Rice and Kristi Yamaguchi, and I understand Jerry Rice is a--
Resident.
Resident, yeah. We'll both be there. So I'll leave this with you.
There's a great, great little choir here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. [applause]
So our next proclamation is an Earth Day proclamation, and I won't take time to read it all, but it is, Earth Day is April 22nd, and we're going to talk a little bit more about Earth Day later on in the agenda through our Environmental Programs Committee. So it is, we wanted to make the proclamation about Earth Day that we pledge to support green economy initiatives in the Town of Atherton, and we encourage others to undertake similar actions. So there we go with that. So now's the time that we have public comments, and this portion of the meeting is for members of the public who wish to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight. However, if because you have time constraints or you can't stay for the agenda later in the meeting, just note that if you make your comment now, then you won't be able to make a comment during the agenda time. While it's nice to know who you are, it's not a requirement that you give your address or state your name, but for the record, it is nice to know who's speaking. So do we have any members of the public that wish to speak at this time? Come right up?
Hi. My name is Patrick Sweeney, and I just wanted to introduce myself to the members of council and the board. I am the new branch manager of the Atherton Public Library. Katherton moved, Kareem moved on to Millbrae and the Brisbane Libraries, and I'm managing the Atherton and East Palo Alto Libraries. If you have any questions, I'm in the offices usually in the morning, and my email address is sweeney@smcl.org. And let me know if you have any questions or any comments about the library, anything I can do for council or anyone else.
I would just like to say that my wife is on the, you know, the Friends of the Library Committee, and talking to you, she was extremely impressed with what you have done in East Palo Alto.
Well, thank you.
And I'm hoping that we can bring some of these same things to Atherton, because I guess you've really had a wonderful run over there.
We have, we have.
And I'm so happy that you're here and maybe can bring some of these things to Atherton.
Thank you very much.
And you're still at East Palo Alto.
I am at both, yes.
Yeah, sharing time there, so that's good. Any other, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for introducing yourself. Appreciate that. Any other members of the public like to speak at this time? If not, I'll close the public comment section and go on to the next item. We do not have any close session report, and we will go to the city manager's report. Please note on the city manager's report that there is an additional item, 6A Community Center Advisory Committee Report, that is a separate document in the packet. So George, would you like to make the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to be very brief. You have the report before you, and I can answer any questions, and staff's here as well to answer any questions. The only one I would like to comment on is the 6A item, where in that particular report, that's page 13 of 37, it's recommended that the council provide some general consensus on criteria that's going to be used to review and select applicants to serve on the CCA Committee. Staff will consolidate any information you provide this evening, and then during the meeting at which the council is going to make appointments, which I think is at this time kind of rescheduled for April 3rd, we'll provide it to the council as they deliberate about the candidates. That's my report.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any clarifying questions or comments to the city manager right now about this or the staff? Councilmember Vice Mayor Carlson?
Yes. This Atherton Bridge Channel ownership thing was interesting that you had your report there. I, for one, would like to know more about South Bridge District and what it encompasses in terms of geographical area and the taxing structure for the area. It's the same for all parcels or exactly what I think we need to really have a better picture of that whole thing. The water recycling topic, I've suggested that perhaps we ought to party at these contact with the Sanitation District and see if there's a project, opportunity there to participate within other agencies in doing something for a secondary source for water for maybe the area parks and Sharon Heights Country Club and the Service Club possibly. I like the idea of adding a legislative section to your report. I'm not sure how you sort of pick and select the items that have most interest because there's so many bills there to go through, but I think that to start doing that is a step forward. I noted also that you're still having problems getting all the answers that we after with the county library system, and I find that kind of disheartening frankly, that after about two years of asking questions, we still haven't gotten clear answers there. And I'm at the point as on the council here of thinking about doing a Dear Colleague's Letter to take a look at some alternatives. If anybody else would like to join me in that, please let me know, and we can discuss it in more detail.
Why don't we invite Anne Marie down here to answer our questions of the council?
She came down in, I think it wasn't November.
She's been here. No, I know, but we can give her the list of questions we want to answer it to and ask her to come prepared to do that.
Yeah, we certainly could, but--
I think what Councilmember Vice Mayor Carlson is saying, colleagues' memo about a deeper discussion through council about alternatives.
The, another topic I raised over two months ago was this involved Selby Lee School and the Redwood City School District and the Redwood City Police Department and the protocols and the interoperability or whatever protocol between agencies and so forth. I sure would like to get an answer to some of the questions on that, and more, it's been on the table for some time, and I think that is there a reason we're not hearing?
No, we were actually involved in them on numerous levels, and there's a county-level activity that's pending where we're going to be involved with the local schools.
Well, I'd like to know what the protocol situation here, where they adopted their own protocol, apparently, and as to how we're fitting in with that, and does each school develop their own protocols? It looks a little bit awkward to have three different school districts with three different sets of protocols here.
That's true.
When best practices have, would indicate, I would think, that there'd be a standard that, so those are open questions in my mind that I'd like to get addressed with. The, there's still some items in Park follow-up, the use of the residents of the park, the Little League Plan status, and there's also a proposal by one of the residents that came here about raising funds to upgrade the tennis courts. Those are the three areas I'd like to maybe come back on. Thank you.
Any other council members have a comment on the city manager's report?
I just wanted to ask, maybe through staff, through the chief, a little bit about their, the increase in burglaries in our town specifically, as well as county-wide. I was at the Council of Cities Dinner where the San Mateo Chief of Police held a panel and clearly talked about the increase in burglaries, and, you know, I note that we are having more of that here. Is that, are you, did I put you on the spot? I'm sorry if I did.
We did have a burglary over the weekend. It was an entry into a lot of towns, and the suspect was scared off by dogs barking. We had a couple entries into some unlocked garages, detached garages, and entries into cars. We made some arrests on those. As you know, I think on Friday, there was a rapid notify that was put out about some burglaries on Selby Lane that was actually in the unincorporated area of San Mateo County, and the Sheriff's Department had made arrests in those as well. We have not, in Atherton at least, witnessed the level that Chief Mannheimer had discussed at that event. In fact, I sit on the association, Chief's Association, with them, and we discuss those things on a regional level as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just, with the realignment of the prison population and sentencing and severity of crimes, it seems like burglaries are on the uptick, whereas, you know, hand-to-hand robberies are on the decline. But just to let our residents know to always lock their doors and that, you know, set their alarms, and it goes straight to the police department, and the response is pretty incredible. The other comment that I have about the city manager's report is on his item A, 6A, having to do with the Community Center Advisory Committee update. Part of it talks about the March 18th open house. We did host an open house for potential applicants and walked all the grounds. And then the establishing criteria for the committee selection. It talks about the council to provide some general consensus for criteria and that to provide staff with some consensus criteria. Is there a methodology in which we should be doing this? I know that when we went out for selection for the Town Center Task Force back in 2010, we advertised, we set out the criteria that, under which the council made their selection. And so is that something that we just submit to city manager or distribute to the council? How are we going to decide on that criteria?
Well, the council can suggest some this evening, and we'll have to compile that list together for your consideration at April 30th.
So do you want to take a look at what we did for the Town Center Task Force and talk about that now?
Again, although I would ask this question, how many applicants do we have to CCA see so far?
Eight or nine, I believe.
I mean, we only have seven on the committee, so it might be, it might be that, you know, we don't have enough, so we have to make a selection.
There's 10, I don't know why.
10? Well, I'd be happy to come up with some criteria.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm just--
Why don't we look at this and then get letters? I got the impression that you wanted us to submit criteria to you as opposed to--
Right, doing that, that's what I was wondering, but just--
Put some that.
Okay, so--
Well, this is good, thank you.
Just kind of an outline, and that's, so.
Submit some thoughts in the moment. We'll complete that back out.
Okay, all right. So moving on. Is that here? There's no community roundtable, so we'll go on to our consent calendar, and I know that the city manager has some comments to make regarding several items on the consent calendar at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Three items that I just wanted to make comments on, no need to pull them unless the council wishes to do so. Item eight, the minutes for the regular February meeting, there were some corrections to them to reflect proper motions that were made by the council at the meeting. In particular, items 15, 23, and 24 on those minutes were corrected to reflect the proper motions that were made that evening. Also, there was a spelling error or two. We had a council member's name spelled incorrectly. We can fix that.
Do we have copies of the corrected notes?
I think, Teresa, did you make copies or just make the correct?
Changes.
Yeah, I'd like to see those, yeah. People else will.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, well, we can return that to the next meeting.
We can return.
Item 14, the storage and operation of INET. There was a letter included in that item that came up at the last meeting, and the letter, when we took a look at it, satisfied our concern with respect to having to remove the INET equipment when we potentially demolished the structure. That's not at our cost. When I discussed it with the JPA, they also indicated that there could be a break-in service for that INET service when we remove it, and they'd be responsible for putting it back in, and they had talked about a workaround that they'd be able to figure out until the building was reconstructed and the equipment was restored. Then item 21, Councilmember Whitmer brought up at the last meeting, a report from June of 2012, where there was suggested savings for the CalPERS Pension Plan, and when the budget was produced for 1213, that wasn't appropriately reduced accordingly. And as you know, when we look at the mid-year, we net out savings versus expenditures in particular accounts, and so what we had suggested we would do for the council was bring back and audit of what actually transpired within the police department's budget, and we'll do that at the April meeting so you can see how that all ended out. Thanks to Councilmember Whitmer for bringing that to our attention.
Can we ask a question on, maybe I--
Sure.
On 14, because I was going to pull 14.
14.
And I think you touched base on it. When I went over the letter that they sent you, you know, the concern wasn't just the potential move of the equipment and the termination and possibly relocation, but there was the costs associated with that. And the letter that they sent did not say that we would be held harmless with regards to cost association. So as long as there's, you know, an understanding, and if I were you, I would recommend that you ask them just to amend the letter or just, you know, send you an email saying that we would be held harmless with regards to cost implications.
Well, they didn't actually say that. The town is not responsible for any costs associated with the removal and relocation of the equipment and/or the fiber termination point for the equipment. That's the last sentence of the second paragraph.
Yeah, I've got it right here. Okay.
After the word.
Well, I'm not on the binder, I'm on my--
On that basis, the JPA believes the town has neither the right nor the obligation to remove the equipment.
Right.
Okay. The town is not responsible for any costs associated.
All right, okay. All right, fine, so I won't pull that one.
All right.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Eric?
That's all the comments I have.
These are the changes. Are these the changes?
Yeah, they're very minor.
Can we pass those around so that we might be able to tickle it? So typically, items on the consent calendar are routine in nature, and they're generally considered in one motion, items eight through 21. However, any member of the public can pull a consent item for minor comments or for further discussion. And it's also helpful for council members to take time prior to the meeting to discuss their comments and concerns with the city manager or other staff so that the time isn't taken up during council meeting for minor questions that we may have. So as we like to move our meeting along as expeditiously as possible, I respect everyone's time. So I'd like to open it up to the public for any items that the public may wish to pull or may have commented on for the consent calendar, items number eight through 21. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any members of the council who would like to pull? Why don't we start with Councilmember Leest? Do you have any items that you'd like to pull or make a comment?
Number 13.
You're going to pull it, or are you going to make a comment?
I just want to follow up with George.
Why don't you go ahead and pull it, because I--
Oh, you're going to pull it.
I was going to pull up.
Okay.
Number 13. And I'll also pull 15.
Which one? Number 15?
15 and 20.
20? Okay.
I had a quick question on nine. I was also going to jump into the fray on 13. 15, I have a question just on, if we've used this contractor before, on 19.
So wait a minute, you're pulling number nine? You have a question on--
I have a question on nine. I'm not pulling it. I'm just, yes, it can be answered very, very quickly.
Okay. 13?
13, 15. I have a question on 19, and that's it.
Okay. So I have a question on 17, and I'd like to pull number 18. Okay. So Bill, why don't we ask--
I have a question on nine also.
Okay. So Jerry, would you like to, let's go down.
First, first up, the question was Bill.
Okay. Bill, would you like to ask your question on number nine?
Yeah. At the top of page 14 of 15, there was the refund of the check for bohemus, and I guess my question really is, as you know, that's been an ongoing saga here for about two years now. Is that now completed? Does that project complete it? Do we know? Mike?
You're saying 14 of 16?
Page 14 of, yeah, it's top of page 14. It was a refund for 275 poehemus.
Yes, that project is completed.
Okay. So that was just the refund of the final thing for replacing the trees that died, and there was all that issue?
I'm not sure of the specific, but there are deposits, and so I believe it's a refund of whatever deposits they had coming back.
Okay, so that project is done. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Carlson?
Yeah, my question is regarding a couple of the library charges. They're small, very small charges, but just the process by which we handle these. These are direct costs incurred during the year. Other direct costs that are incurred by the library during the year at the county level go against the current year's taxing charge, I believe. They deducted or paid bills at the county level, don't they?
They do.
Okay. Now, these charges for water and maintenance and things like that, do we send those charges up to county and they pay it out of there?
No, it comes out of our, I think that's reimbursed to--
Yeah. It's reimbursed how?
It comes out of the library fund portion.
Comes out of the donor fund that we have on books?
It doesn't come out of the direct costs of operating at the library? It doesn't go to the direct cost?
I'd have to verify that.
Well, this is very important, you know, even if it's a small amount, I think that we, it ought to be handled consistently.
Right.
If the direct costs and indirect costs are going to be handled at county level, then these things ought to be bumped up there, and they should pay for them and come out of the current year's tax rather than the donor fund.
We'll do a little clarification on that, if you're not--
Okay. Any other comment or question on item number nine? So we're pulling number 13, we're pulling number 15, we're pulling number 18, number 20, and Councilmember--
Question on 17 and 19?
I was just going to say, Councilmember Whitmer, you have a question on 17?
No.
19?
Yes. So how about 17? It was just a question on 17. Somebody said they had a question on 17.
That was mine. I was just going to ask Lisa, sorry, just real quickly. General plan update. Our plan was 2002, when it was originally updated. We've updated in 2010 for the housing element.
When do you expect that we should refresh our entire general plan? I read somewhere in the Lega Cities documents that it's be twenty, a ten-year window or something.
Correct, we plan to update it with the update coming through on the bike and circulation element. Is to at that point also update the general plan. Atherton is pretty consistent as far as a town, as far as land use goes, so I wouldn't expect any significant changes.
Okay, thank you, I should have called you on that.
No problem. We'll be looking at this.
Yeah, Mike, on the, on the patching contract, you know, everything looked fine. The only question is, is a new, a new name? And have we, have we used these people well in the past? Or are they used in a consistent? Are they used in any of our neighboring cities for doing patching? And then also a follow-up question would be, would there be in the future any value in us joining either on some of our refurbishment of our roads or our patchwork with another city? So we might get maybe some economies of scale? With either Steve or Mike, sorry.
I can definitely answer on the part of the first part of your question, which is, we have used G. Bartolotto and Son twelve years. I've been here at least five times to do the patching contract. They've always done a good to excellent rating for us. And the reason they work here so much is they beat everyone's prices by a good amount. They leave a lot of money on the table. They like to do the work here, their station's out of San Carlos. So their economy of just being able to move their equipment a short distance is a saving to us.
And what about the secondary question? I think I ask this every year and I've never really got a good answer, so.
Well, I can tell you that the price we're getting currently per square foot to do the work in our city is as good, if not better, than what our neighboring cities are getting. Right around six dollars a square foot for the six-inch dig out that we require. But we can look into what other cities are doing as far as their patching contracts go. I don't know if anybody else handles them exactly like us, but economy of scale-wise, I suppose we could look into that.
City manager, did you want to?
Well, yeah, I can, it was certainly something we can evaluate year to year. Sometimes we do them at different times of the year depending on the organizations, but there should be some, something we could.
And are these people doing the patchwork for the Cal Water? Because remember just last year, we looked at Cal Water and they were going to amend the way that they were doing patching and things like that. I mean, is there any, maybe there'd be with Cal Water some sort of consolidation? But anyway, I just would like, if you guys, when you're moving forward, thinking about it and talking to your neighbors, see if we, if there's any economies of scale we could ever get by doing something on a joint or regional basis. Thank you very much for answering the question.
Councilmember Dobby, did you have just a comment on number twenty or you want to pull it all off of them?
Well, I can tell you what my comment sounds like.
Is it a brief comment or does it?
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with buying the cars, except I don't believe that we should. I think if we're going to have this project, it should also include the amount that we will receive when we sell the old cars and the equipment that's on the old cars so that we have the net cost or the expected net cost in that contract. And I don't know that anybody's really looked at it, have you?
Well, I talked to councilmember Whitmer about this as well, and we're probably not going to know what we get for those cars until we get them stripped down and find out what condition they are and then I'd probably work with Steve Tyler on setting up some sort of auction. Councilmember Whitmer also mentioned that he'd like to see us look at something more locally to auction them off. But we'll try to get the top dollar for them, but there's no way at this point that, you know, I can have somebody look at them. They're, they're still in service. And I met with another vendor that, outside of the courtyard, that could equip our cars, might be able to save us some money. And he too suggested, yeah, until we pull the equipment off, we don't know what we can get. You know, a lot of its stuff's going to be old like.
I mean, if any idea, five dollars, five thousand, ten thousand, hundred? I mean, you know, you must have some of that equipment we've been using must be still valuable.
I'll go with your guess, somewhere between five dollars and five thousand.
I just wonder.
I feel sometimes we neglect, you know, selling what we, in the past at least, we saw, put that stuff, some of it in inventory, forget about it. Where my feeling is, some of it, if we're aggressive, we can sell and bring in some more money.
Well, in our purchasing policy, as you know, we have a process for getting rid of used and old equipment. I would like to refresh your memory on the report that Ford, for decades, has made the Crown Vic. They're no longer making those.
Yeah, I read that.
So that means the cages and some of the equipment that's specifically fabricated for that car is not going to fit in the new smaller mid-sized cars that police departments are going to. So I'm not sure who would be interested in buying that stuff. That's why I really couldn't come up with a figure until we sorted all out and we'll try to get the top dollar.
I don't know what you can get, it's just, when I read this, I thought maybe there should have been some comment that said we will do our best to salvage what's in the other cars and sell it for the maximum.
I think that, councilmember Dobby, if we want to make that a policy going forward, we should just make that a policy. I don't think it's a, it's a, a preclusion for, or precedent that we have to do that in order to buy this. I mean, it's not something that, it's not said that if we have to get money.
I'm not saying that's a policy, I'm just saying, I think it would have been helpful to me if we'd said we're going to do our best to get as much as we can for the equipment.
Maybe we could do that in the staff report.
Yeah, I can get, that's kind of a given, I mean, we do try that. And the purchasing policy actually requires us to get the best price for what we have for salvage.
We also asked, when I spoke to the chief, I asked that when we're replacing equipment, like a car, that we would include like we did when we did the motorcycles, the maintenance records, if we can get that in time. To, you know, to justify, so people can see not just the mileage, but the car's becoming problematic or a safety issue.
Right, that's one of the reasons why we're trying to replace it.
So we've asked all of our minor questions and we are going to pull items number thirteen.